If I can ask everybody, please stand so we may salute the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an equal republic or a just state, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to take the attendance.
Counselor Vito.
President.
Counselor Azaneda.
President.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Union.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Cortel.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Frank.
Present.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
You have a full call, Mr. Taylor. Okay.
Your fellow business memoriam and celebratory resolutions. First resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the city council. Whereas the city of Chelsea is committed to raising awareness about breast cancer and the impact it has on our loved ones, friends, colleagues, and community members. Whereas thousands of women and men in our country take on the fight against breast cancer each year, and whereas screening and early detection can make a tremendous difference in overcoming breast cancer, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, acknowledge the importance of raising awareness of breast cancer in our community as we work to support survivors, those currently battling breast cancer, and those who might detect it in early stages, and that we recognize October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Chelsea.
Chair recognizes Counselor Cortel.
Now, regarding this matter, there is no objection.
Seeing no objections, so moves. You can speak on the matter.
So, I thank my fellow city council for putting forth this resolution. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Some of us who watch football know it. You see some of my fellow city councillors wearing pink. I was able to dig up my ribbon from a couple of years back. Obviously, it is about awareness and it's about, you know, letting people know that they should be getting checkups, exams, and early detection of any of the issues associated with it is the important key to getting the proper medical treatment as fast as possible and getting the best results for yourself, for your family, for everybody who is affected by it. So, as a city council, we've always tried to get the word out, and that's what we're trying to do here. So, I thank my fellow city council for the resolution.
Thank you. Next order of business.
Next resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the council. Whereas the city of Chelsea is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Chelsea, and whereas U.S. fire departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority of all U.S. fire deaths, and whereas new homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions, and whereas many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds, and whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting, and whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household, whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. Whereas Chelsea first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protective education, and whereas Chelsea residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, to hereby proclaim October 8th to the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. We urge all the people of Chelsea to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year and participate in many public safety activities and efforts of Chelsea's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2017.
Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Unanimously under suspension, no objection.
Seeing no objections, so moves.
You certainly can.
As we all know, actually, one of the worst things that could ever happen to a home is to be engulfed in flames. People get displaced if you have small children. It's one of the things that dwells on even a parent's head. You always think about how they would get out if anything was ever happened. It's always very good to go over with your family, practice how to get two ways out. Every second counts, two ways out. I always remember, change your clock, change your batteries. Every time we move the clock forward, change your batteries in your smoke detector, vice versa. It's just practice, practice, practice. Look at California, look at everything that's going on, practice.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils want to speak on the matter? Seeing none.
Next order of public.
Next, we have public speaking. Anybody who would like to speak, take the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jaceni Alfaro, 12 High Street. I'm here today with my role as the Chelsea Collaborative Staff member. I'm here to make you aware of something that we have learned recently in the challenges in the just past wage-def ordinance of April 2016, that some of you worked really tirelessly with the Chelsea Collaborative members and some of you in the past have such beneficial wage ordinance that is to aim a lot of the businesses that are like the hospitality, the some restaurant and other local businesses in the city. But most recently, we had learned about a group of workers whose workers are not being paid fairly, that are being paid below the minimum wage, but unfortunately, we have a loophole on the wage-def ordinance, and that is that any business that is running from their home is not registered within the city. So, it means that not only that they are not registered here, that not paying taxes to the city, they are violating the wage-def ordinance, but we cannot go after. And I will also ask my coworker, Joanna Deraso, she can give you some of more specific cases that she has seen through the worker center, but I will be happy to meet with you. I know that you have a tight agenda, but I would be happy to take a look at that wage-def ordinance for all of us to work and remediate some of those loopholes. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Joanna Deraso, 56th Clark Ave, Chelsea. I am the new worker center organizer at the Chelsea Collaborative.
Can I get your address again? Couldn't hear you.
56th Clark Ave.
60th Clark Ave. Thank you.
Yes, and based on my experience as the worker center organizer at the collaborative, I have heard the voices and I have seen the faces of the workers that were violated from the minimum wage, and unfortunately, they are scared of proceeding a legal claim because of their immigration status. And in an effort to educate our local businesses, such as restaurants, small-owned businesses, in the summer of this year, we went around the city giving folders, like the one I have here, with copies of the wage-def ordinance that was passed here in Chelsea, and we also had the owners or supervisors sign that they received the package in an effort to educate them about this wage-def ordinance. But unfortunately, months later, we found that these same businesses that signed this paper as receiving the ordinance were the ones that were violating the minimum wage violations. And so, after this restaurant had an incident, they gave the workers a new application that they were going to pay them $11 an hour. After they learned that the Chelsea Collaborative knew about the issue and knew about the incident where workers were injured, they decided to increase the minimum wage. But we don't know like how before they were violating the issues, the minimum wage of $9 an hour. So, we please ask, we ask this moment that you consider working with us in an effort to evaluate and monitor this wage-def ordinance in the city of Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Barbara Richard, 7 Hooper Street, Apartment 3. And I just had already talked to Tom about this issue, and I found out that from the section of Broadway to, all the way down, but from the section of Broadway by East and Ave to like Lewis Street, it's very dark, and one of the streetlights at the corner of East and Ave is out. And I went out, I had to do some business in the city hall today, so I says, let me go down to DPW or up to DPW and ask them to repair the light. I gave them the pole number, and they said because it is a street pole, I mean a state pole, that they cannot fix that light. Well, if they can't fix that light when it's out, how are they going to add more lighting to that section of East and Ave to Broadway? Because it's really dark, especially where S and L's is on the corner of Cabot Street or Corbett Street, whatever that little side street is by the gas station in East and Ave. It's so dark there, and there's two big trees and people with big cars, so anybody could get mugged, jumped. I mean, this section, Mill Hill is starting to get a little bit more dangerous at night. So, that's why I'm asking for better lighting in that area. Like, we've always been the forgotten part of the city because we've been so quiet. Well, you know what? I'm of age now, and I can speak out, and I got a big mouth, as many people know, everywhere. I have a very big mouth, and I would like to see more lighting there because I do walk to the beer and wine store, not that I'm an alcoholic, but I like to get my cigarettes there. It's a lot safer to walk to the beer and wine store than to walk to the Teskies. So, I would like to see more lighting in that area. And I am keeping an eye on the construction site at TND, where the French Club is, and I've already had an incident, but it's already straightened out. I went to the proper channels, but I did shut down their site till 9:00 in the morning because they were inappropriate. But that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? You can take the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Put the time on.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sonia Papeles.
Joanna Deraso, I will be translating for her.
Can you give us her address?
I live in 59 Cherry Street, here in Chelsea.
59 Cherry.
Y este día estoy aquí, presentándome ante ustedes, con mucha tristeza y mucha preocupación.
I am here today presenting here with sadness and worries.
Y esta preocupación, esta tristeza se debe a que hemos estado formando un grupo de residentes de aquí de Chelsea preocupados por el alza inmensurable de la renta y del precio de las casas o viviendas.
And this worry and sadness comes from because we have been meeting with residents from Chelsea that, like me, have concerns about the high cost of rent here in Chelsea.
Y hemos descubierto que algunas de las propiedades que han sido mantenidas por una de las organizaciones que creíamos que era valuarte en el cuidado de las viviendas y del costo de la renta a precio bajo está como desbalanceada.
And because we have learned that some of the organizations that we trusted, that they were going to keep the rent cost, have not been able to do so, and there is an imbalance between the cost-rent.
¿En qué consiste este desbalance? Consiste en que esta organización, con dineros del pueblo, ha mantenido por cierto tiempo las rentas y las viviendas a bajo costo.
This imbalance comes from that this organization has maintained the rent at low cost for our residents.
Pero, en cierta parte de la historia de su vida, ha tenido como un bajón en esta vanguardia, en este quehacer.
However, in a certain period of time, these organizations have had a downfall in this rent issue.
Hemos tenido quejas de compañeros que se les ha negado el apartamento aunque han salido favorecidos en la rifa porque según ellos este compañero no tiene suficiente dinero como para pagar un mortgage.
We have heard complaints from our members and residents that they were rejected based on the waiting list because they didn't have enough money to cover the rent.
Es el mortgage, no la renta, porque el hombre ya está pagando una renta y más elevada, una renta más elevada que un mortgage.
And it's actually the mortgage because this rent is more elevated than the actual mortgage.
Entonces me dice cómo es posible que si puedo pagar una renta de 1,800 dólares y no voy a poder pagar un mortgage de 1,500. ¿Por qué me han descalificado?
So, they asked me, why do they disqualify me if I cannot pay a rent of 1,000 and 100 when I can be paying a mortgage of 1,500?
One minute.
Esta es una cosa, una. La otra cosa es que ayudan a las personas que no sé por qué requisitos sí califican y otras no califican así de la nada.
However, they do help some other folks that I just don't understand why they qualify, like what the requirements are, and they don't qualify other people.
Y la última cosa que es la más preocupante para mí como miembro de la cooperativa de comunidades enraizadas es que una hermana de una miembra de esta organización está vendiendo las casas que deberían estar sirviendo para mantener la renta y el precio de las casas a bajo costo.
However, the thing that worries me most is that a sister of the organization that is selling the houses that should be kept in order to keep the rent at a low cost.
Ahí suena a monopolio, suena, ah, no sé, no me atrevo a hablar más de eso, pero no suena bien. No se puede ser pues y parte al mismo tiempo.
Last comments.
So, that, for me, does not sound good because we cannot be the part of it and also the judge of it.
Así que les suplico que pongamos sobre eso, por favor.
So, I please ask that this issue be taken into consideration.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? I'll ask again, any other speakers for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Next order of business is the.
Approval of the minutes, City Council, September 25th, 2017.
Counselor Cortel moves to adopt an unanimously under suspension, seeing no objections, Communications from the city manager.
First communication. Neshnepe E. Elvarado Alvaro, conflict of interest exemption. Dear councilors, I am writing to request a conflict of interest exemption in order that Neshnepe Elvarado Alvaro may hold a part-time ESOL instructor position in the community schools program. The position will be part-time for not more than six hours per week. This request is made to establish the position as special under the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vito.
And as I would wave the people that have filed the communication, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Next communication.
Next communication, a request for adoption of complete streets policy. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the city council approve the city's first complete streets policy. This policy aligns with the city's planning and design philosophy.
Chair recognizes Counselor Azaneda. Accepting.
You moved that, the way you're reading, and accept and file the communication under suspension, there's going to be something else coming up.
Something coming up on the new business. Thank you, Counselor. Next communication.
Fiscal year 2018 tax rates. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the Chelsea City Council schedule a meeting of the Subcommittee Conference on Monday, October 30th, 2017, on a more convenient date or on a more convenient date soon thereafter for the purpose of discussing the fiscal year 2018 tax rates. My goal at that meeting is to provide a PowerPoint presentation and then answer questions about FY18 valuations and the tax rate in a format similar to what I have done the past two years. I also ask that the city council schedule a public hearing with the Board of Assessors on Monday, November 13th, 2017, for the purpose of voting on a minimal residential factor and setting the tax rate for FY18.
Counselor Cortel moves to accept and file a communication under suspension. There's something coming up on the new business.
Communication to petition to the council. We have a communication received from City Clerk, Packing Clerk, Jeanette Sintron White regarding the warrant for the city election, November 7th, 2017.
Counselor Murphy moves to accept and file a communication, something will be coming up on the new business.
Yep. We have a copy of a communication received from Ms. Deborah Davis, School Committee Chair of the Naughtes Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee regarding the establishment of a stabilization fund.
Counselor Rodriguez moves to accept and file a communication under suspension, seeing no objections.
We have a copy of a communication received from City Clerk, Packing Clerk, Jeanette Sintron White regarding the actions approved at the October 3rd, 2017 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Raise the remain of the reading, accept and file the communication, suspension, no objection, adopt unanimously under suspension, no objection.
You want to adopt the.
Accept and file.
Yes, traffic and parking.
Accept and file.
Yeah, accept and file. Thanks.
Second readings, Mr. Chairman. We have an order introduced by Counselor Murphy, read for the second time, an order transferring proceeds of a borrowing that are no longer needed to complete the project for which they were originally borrowed to pay cost of an alternative capital project as authorized by Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws. Order that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the sum of $54,545, representing the unexpended portion of the $700,000 borrowed under the fiscal year 2018 CIP plan for the purpose of vehicle acquisition pump of account, but which is no longer needed to complete that project, is hereby abandoned, discontinued, and funds transferred in the amount of $54,545 to supplement the assistance to firefighters' grant vehicle acquisition project.
Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
By roll call vote.
Counselor Murphy moves to adopt on a roll call vote. A yes vote will be to adopt.
Yes.
Counselor Azaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Cortel.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Frank.
Yes.
And Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
All other members voting in favor, motion adopted.
Next order.
Next order, read for the second time, introduced by Counselor Murphy. Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts makes available funds to reimburse 70% of the total project cost of up to a maximum of $400,000 for the acquisition and/or development of local parkland under the Massachusetts Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Park Grant. And whereas the city's 2010 Open Space and Recreation Plan update, the administration and the Department of Planning and Development have identified open space goals and projects of interest and concern to the community, I recommend that the city apply for park funding to realize these specific goals. Whereas the city has been awarded park grant funds in the amount of $400,000 to renovate Highland Park's basketball courts, playground.
Counselor Murphy moves to waive the remaining of the, waive the reading. He would like to.
Suspension, and I will talk on it.
On a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yes.
Want to speak on the matter.
So, basically, not to cut our clerk off, this is just like we do with every other park grant that we have. The city funds the total amount of the money. We get reimbursed at $230,000, just like we've done everywhere else. We're going to do this to Highland Park.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes to adopt. Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor Azaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Cortel.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Frank.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Other members voting in favor, not opposed, motion adopted. That's it on second reading, Mr. Chairman.
On to new business.
Going on to new business. Under new business, first order introduced by Counselor Robinson, order that the city council of the city of Chelsea hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, for the temporary part-time position of a ESOL instructor to be held by Neshnepe.
Chair recognizes Counselor Cortel.
Counselor Cortel moves a roll call vote on the adoption.
Clerk will call a roll.
Yes to grant the exemption. Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor Azaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Cortel.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Frank.
Yes.
And Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Other than favor, none opposed, motion adopted. Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Whereas the city of Chelsea has worked diligently in fostering safe and welcoming public ways for people who bicycle, drive, take public transportation, and walk, and whereas the city of Chelsea has historically undertaken planning studies and capital improvements to enhance. to enhance public infrastructure for all users, and whereas a number of municipalities across Massachusetts and the United States have adopted a formal complete streets policy, and whereas complete streets are designed in a context-sensitive manner to enable safe transportation for all users, emphasizing vulnerable users and compliance with the Americans and Disabilities Act, and whereas...
Chair recognizes Council Abad Janeda.
Thank you, I move that we waive the reading and move this to conference.
Seeing no objections, we'll move it to conference. Thank you, Consular.
Under suspension.
Under suspension.
Next order introduced by Council Robinson, order that the warrant for the city election 27th, election November 7th, 2017 be accepted.
Council Cortell. Council Cortell moves for a roll call vote on the adoption. Clerk will call a roll.
Yes vote would be to have the election, and no vote would be not to have the election. Council Vito. Council Abad Janeda. Council Tiara. Council Rodriguez. Council Ray Coopero. Council Cortell. Council Murphy. Council Lopez. Council Robinson. Council Frank. Council Garcia. Other members voting in, none opposed, motion adopted. Next order introduced by Council Vito and Council Lopez, order that a Subcommittee Conference be held to discuss the imposition of term limits for all members of boards and commissions in the city of Chelsea to promote diversity of members' ideas and reflects the changing times.
Which one was that? Was that D?
It's D, yeah.
At this time, I'm going to rule this out of order. I spoke with the city solicitor, and it goes against our charter, so therefore, I'm going to rule it out of order.
I spoke with the city solicitor, and she advised me to put it in when I spoke with her. It's a subcommittee, we're not voting on anything, it's just a conversation.
Right, so we're going to go to conference, and he's going to tell you just what I told you, that it's against the charter. But if you want to go to conference, you can ask to overrule the chair.
Then I'd ask to overrule the chair.
You have to ask for a roll call vote.
Okay.
Huh? Want to speak on the matter?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm a little confused because I spoke with the city solicitor about the possibility of imposing term limits within the boards. Some of the boards make some decisions that we, as a city council, don't even have any say in, and we are the elected officials that have to face the residents at the end of the day. All I'm asking is for us to have a conversation, to talk if this is something that we should do. We have people that have been sitting on boards for years and years, and with all due respect to the work that they do, the city is constantly changing, and it would be nice to kind of diversify it a little bit with the changing times and have new people, get new ideas. I mean, we have to run every two years, why should someone be allowed to sit on a board for years and with everything that's changing in the community? So I just want a conversation to see if it's something that we can do. Thank you.
Council Abad Janeda.
Yeah.
It was like, beat the buzzer.
Respectfully, you know, when I read this, I said, you know what, let me hear out the reasoning behind this before making any, I want to say, decision nor opinion about it. And I haven't heard Council Daniel Lopez's reasoning before, you know, so far, so I know his name is attached, so I'd love to hear from you also. But the first thought to my mind that, when I read this, was that it seems very misinformed. And I say this because I've yet, I didn't hear anything about this. To the public, we currently have term limits. Everybody who's appointed to the board, myself included, when I was on the license board, when I was on the planning board, we had a term limit. I think two years, three years. So there is a term limit already in place. And we've been here, some of us, me longer than most, you know, I will yield to the president who's been here longer than I have collectively, but we have appointments in front of us. In the last couple of years, this board, we've seen reappointments on there. So there was an opportunity that if you didn't want someone on the board and you wanted to change, there was your opportunity, we have the opportunity to say no to that person. If you want new people on the board, stand up and say, thank you for your service, we don't want you, I want someone new, and send that message to the city manager. This is cowardly. If you don't have the guts to say no to someone you don't want on the board and you want imposed term limits, hey, do it the right way. Stand up and say, I'm sorry, I appreciate your service, Lisa Sanagate, thank you for your years, I don't want you. Tuck Willis, thank you very, thank you for all your years, and say no to them. But that takes guts, doesn't it? To say no to someone's face. Oh, so much easier to do it this way. Along with this, for those of us who have been here, involved in this community for many years, we know, we've been to the meetings, and I can name how many people were there five years ago. They weren't there 10 years ago, they weren't there 15 years ago, they weren't there 20 years ago. How do I know? I've been to those meetings. So we've had turnover on those boards. So for someone to say, put this, at least have some facts in front of you and say, oh, you know what, we have people who've been on the boards forever. That's not the case. We've had turnover, we've had change. It also, it brings a little bit of naivety to how we operate here at city. Let me tell you, some of the hardest things we do, rather, what the planning board, zoning board, and what the city has to do in dealing with business in the city, is having a quorum. Do you know how hard it is to get people to volunteer, to be on our boards, sacrifice their time, and do the city's business? Do you know how frustrating it's been sometimes when it's a homeowner, a business owner, or someone who's going in front every once a month meeting, and they don't have a quorum? And they have to wait another month. That costs money, that costs time, that's quite frankly, not professional. So we have to balance getting people, not only get people interested, but get people who are interested and will serve, and that's what we have so far. And it takes all of that away. To those who have served, thank you for your service, and I'm glad we have you. Lastly, this is so hypocritical. I can't believe how hypocritical this is, and I'll say why. I'm going to bring up old history here. I've, there were two councils on this board, both who had experience on being on the licensing board. And we had a problem with one member of that board. We had experience on that board, we'd been to so many meetings, we didn't agree with his line of thinking, his line of argument. We had a problem bar in this business, in this city, a stabbing, drug sales. He attempted to have an illegal strip joint, the owner of this bar. And when the police finally had all of that in front of the licensing board to say, let's close this down, one member said, oh no, let's give them a new chance. I was aghast, as a member of that board, I was aghast, can't believe, he, this gentleman was so hard on everyone else, but in this particular case, and I felt he didn't deserve to be on the board strenuously. And another member on this council, and he can speak for himself, who's also a licensing board member, who's also was, his district was affected by this problem bar, complaints by neighbors, said, please, we beg the city manager, don't put him back on, please, put him on the planning board, something where it's not going to be as impactful, we need someone who's going to be safe for our community, listen to this community. We lost the battle. It wasn't easy. We took heat for it. I knew whose family that was, I knew I was going to get dirty looks from standing up and saying, I don't want that person on the licensing board, and I took heat, and I get the dirty looks, oh well, but you know what, I had the gumption and the courage to say, I'll do it. That's what it took. Meanwhile, the very person who's doing this worked behind the scenes and brought the family, oh, you better bring them up, you better come up and speak in favor, this is going on, read incomplete notes, meeting notes. With all due respect to Paul Casino, if you read our meeting notes, are they true indicative of what goes on to our meetings? They're cliff notes, they're not really what's going on, you'd have to be at those meetings to know what was going on. Same goes for licensing board hearings. So when you're referencing to licensing board notes, it's not what's going on. Yet, but that's what they used, took the heat, voted for reappointment of that individual, where's the change? You're asking for the change now, term limits, but in that case, what was politically advantageous to you, you said no. I heard from one other counselor, sorry Roy, I can't take that vote, their family, they supported me. Really? When it's hard and you have to face and make a tough vote, but no, let's go easy, let's do the coward thing. I won't support this, I don't care if it's out of order, I will fight this. And if you guys want to go in that direction, under that sort of leadership, bravo, but I'll tell you, I'm going to make a stink about it, that's for sure.
Thank you, Consular. Council Lopez.
Yes, we put this order, right, because, and you said, not too many people go to these meetings, I went, one of them, I always go to every meeting, in 10 years, maybe I wasn't really involved 20 years, 25 years ago, but for about 15 years, 10 years maybe, I've been involved, and I used to go to all those meetings. And for you to say that maybe, that was me that I was never there, I always been on all these meetings. You said the word coward, I'm not a coward. The reason that we do this is because we want to see changes. Maybe it didn't happen when you want it, but now it's a different year, different time, and... And we want to see more people who volunteer, you know, that's the idea, to have more people to come and then be a volunteer for different boards, sign up for this. We not just want to appoint people, we want people to apply and come, and so become a board member, there's so many board members where they can be involved, and the idea is to have different faces in new people, not just the same people that have been there all the time.
Now, your Council Cortell.
So, I will put aside the fact that when I read this initially, my inclination was there was a potential charter issue with it, respecting the opinion of the president, who sounds like he consulted the city solicitor, although, again, it sounds like my fellow counselor also did as well. I'll put that aside, whether it is or is not against the charter, obviously, if it is not, I mean, if it's violative of the charter, we take an oath to uphold that charter, and if, until and unless we change it, we must abide by the charter as it's written. But I will put that aside in the same way my fellow counselor did, and focus on a couple other, I think, important points. One really important point is that boards and commissions are recommended by the city manager. Historically, the city manager has sought input of city councilors, just asking, we have an opening on this particular board, do you have anybody you know who might be interested, you know, can you forward them a resume? So that's, that's really step one, that's an informal part. And then the second part is that we actually approve, city council actually approves those individuals. And a very important point was made by a fellow counselor, and that is that city council, they do have a term, and city council votes whether to reappoint them again. So in some ways, I actually think the matter is moot because they have term limits. We have chosen, except for the one incident that, or situation that my fellow counselor mentioned, I don't recall any, I don't recall ever taking a vote against a particular member or to not reappoint them. I'll get back a second to that particular situation, but I just want to cover. So again, I think it's not, I think there is, there is a term limit, so we're actually talking about something that already exists, it's just a question if city council, however it's fashioned now, later, in the next session, can make a decision one by one, again, like was referenced, a particular person is there, you want to see turnover, you know there's someone else who wants to be there, and you say, thank you for your service, and take the vote, and then move on to another person. I remind everybody again, it was brought up, these are volunteer boards, the city of Chelsea, by the charter, does delegate a significant amount of responsibility to volunteer boards, they are volunteer boards. I remember sitting before, many of the councilors here were even sworn in yet, but were getting up to speed and doing a very good job wanting to start on day one, I remember sitting at a zoning board meeting that went almost till midnight. These are people who volunteer at the end of a busy day. Historically, it's, it's been difficult to fill seats that are open, and there are seats that are often open, right, raising the quorum question, where you do have people who wait a month for a parking, something parking, a month for a zoning, and then not enough people show up to have the meeting. The, the last thing I'll say about the specific situation that where one person was, it was a, it turned out to be a 50-50 vote on council, I believe there was one absent person, I took that difficult vote, I am the other person who's being referred to by my fellow counselor, both of us as former license commission members. I want to take a little of the personal part away from it and any allegation against anybody. I will just say, from my standpoint, I, I was on the license commission, I have gone to many, many meetings, I had gone to many meetings, I felt that individual was voting inconsistently with the rest of the other members, and there was a progressive discipline issue. I will out and out state that I did not, I actively asked if he would, he's a very capable individual, and I said, he is, he is passionate, and he would be very helpful and useful on possibly another board. But on this particular one, I did want to see change. That vote, I, I asked if the city manager might consider that, his name was put up in front of the city council. Members made their arguments and their vote, and ultimately, I was on the losing side of that vote. But that was a situation where people who I felt had experience and knew what goes on at licensing commission, wanted to see a change, and ended up that no change was made. And so, again, I, I'll end by saying, end of the day, city council does approve these individuals and then approves their renewal of the term that's recommended. They're volunteers, a lot of empty spates, this is... I'll be voting against it.
Matt Frank.
So, I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the points that were made previously, but I do want to say that I do believe that this goes against the charter, so I completely agree with the president's that I'm going to be voting against pushing this forward. But I do also want to say that it's not like we have a line outside of city hall with people waiting for these positions who are qualified for the positions. Actively, the city continuously tries to... Actively, the city continuously tries to get people engaged. People meet with the city manager on a regular basis. I know because I've seen it. I know because he asks us, "Do you know anybody for..." We have an open season every so often where he's like, "These are the seats that are open." I know I'm Counselor Alvin A... Sorry, it's been a long day. Alvin Ader and myself actually went to do a talk with TND with a boot camp they had of people that were looking to get more involved on how to get onto different boards and commissions, actively trying to pull new, exciting, invigorating people into these positions. I know I myself was a planning board member and I, before I became a counselor, and I look at the planning board now, and we have a member of the planning board here, he wasn't here when I was here. In fact, almost nobody on the planning board was here when I was on the planning board, except for the chairperson and I think one other person. Sometimes it's hard to keep track of who's who. But I'm pretty sure that every single person that's there now was not there when I was there. The same thing when I go to some of these other meetings, the licensing meetings, those names and faces have changed over the ten years that I've been here. So I understand that we might not have strict term limits, but people pull themselves out because life hits them. These are free positions that people are doing on behalf of the city, essentially enact a charity to help the city run things forward. And one of the reasons why we have these boards and commissions take on these responsibilities is because we have, the city had a past where there was too much power centralized within a few hands. Our board and commission system decentralizes that power over all these different boards and commissions. If you want to get something through to get it built, you have to get through sometimes the Economic Development Board, the zoning board, the planning board, and if you want to liquor license, you better hit that Licensing Commission as well. That's an awful lot of people you have to get through. Whereas there used to be a time in this city when all you had to do was grease one hand and you were done. That's why it's important to have all these extra faces, all of these people that actually know what they're doing. Because I think the real problem we have with some of our boards and commissions is we might not fully train them enough, and we might not even have retention for long enough, that they might, a lot of the times, they don't fully know the tools at their disposal. I often hear that from the planning board, that something will happen, they'll vote for something, and after the fact, they'll say, "Oh, I didn't realize I could have voted against that," or "I could have gone in this direction." And it's not their fault, it just comes with the times. When you have that movement and things change, people don't get that confidence. So I would actually be on board, trying to come up with ways to keep people on for longer because then you get these board members who are confident in their voice. They know when they can vote yes, when they can vote no. When you continuously have people cycling in and out, it actually makes it harder to enforce some of these rules because people don't have that confidence. So that's where I'll leave it at that. We don't have people banging at the door for these positions. When we do, that would be a good time to come back and reassess, but that's not currently happening.
Thank you. Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to remain a bit of it. I think we've heard incredible points on both sides, and I want to take the moment to really thank Counselor Lopez and Counselor Vidal for their initiative. I see where you're coming from and I see your intention. I also see that other colleagues have made some strong points and some great suggestions. On this matter, it seems that imposing the term limits, from what I'm hearing, goes against the, we have been imposing them. So allow me to clarify that. It seems that we have been imposing those term limits, but I do see the intention in the talk about diversifying these boards and commissions, which is so important, and it's a discussion that has been going on at national level. I would say that perhaps, instead of having this conference in violation that may, it appears to be in violation of the charter, perhaps we want to stir the conversation and talk more about how can we get more people that are diverse, more diverse versions, people to come up and apply for these positions? How do we ignite that interest? Luckily, for the past two years, I've sat here and I have seen that many people, many residents, diverse residents as well, have taken the initiative to be and serve on these commissions, which is important, and it's been progress, so we need to consider the progress. But I guess the conversation should be more on how do we promote, what effective ways can we really communicate and explain to people what the commitment is to serve in a boarding commission and how can we better train them? So I think I'd love to have a conversation on that and that hopefully is not in violation of the charter.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Cooperow.
There ain't much I got to say. Just a couple of things I got to say. That's not, just quick to the point. Okay, I've been here a while now, and it seems like that the same people are on the same boards. Why are the same people on the same boards? Because sometimes what happens is the counselors, they say, "We could eliminate them," but if you have six counselors, they'll stay there forever. Majority rules. That's the way it is. But that ain't the point. The point is, how do we get different people to come in if they don't want to come in? How do we get them to come if nobody wants to do it? So the thing is, the city itself should have another initiative to enroll more people, not to tell them like, you know, "These people that are there, they're there. You got to thank them that they're there." Because if they weren't there, nobody else would be there. So the point is, the city itself should have an initiative to make people or advertise outside to say, "This is what's going to go on, and this is how you do it." And if you don't do that, you're never going to get diversity, you're never going to get change because it's not going to happen. You're going to have the people that want to come and serve on these boards. If they don't want to come and serve on those boards, nothing's going to change because then people are going to stay there because nobody else is applying. So it's the city initiative itself. It has to try to recruit more people to serve on these boards.
Any other counselors? If I may, from the chair, just a point of information. The city manager does talk to all of us about if we know anybody that wants to serve on the boards. I think the other piece that we're missing is that when the appointments come here to us, they're always moved to a second reading so that we could have an opportunity to pick up the phone, call up the candidate, and ask whatever questions that we want to ask to see whether or not that's the type of person we want to serve on the board. So that's a piece that we need to be paying attention to. Don't have anything else to add to the conversation. Turn the roll call.
Yes.
Okay, just to clarify the vote.
The chair's been challenged, so if you agree with the challenge, you vote yes. Yes to override the chair. A no would be not to override the chair, and the order would be pulled. Okay? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor Alvin Ader?
No.
Counselor Tejada?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Ray Cooperow? Counselor Cortell? Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Frank?
No.
Counselor Garcia?
No.
Two in favor of override, nine oppose. The decision override is upheld. The next order is introduced by Counselor Lopez and Counselor Vidal. Audit that the city manager consult with the parking clerk and report back an audit of how many businesses have more than one registered commercial vehicle without off-street parking in a residential zone.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lopez.
Yes, I put this order...
What's the motion, Counselor?
Suspension. Adoption of suspension.
Under suspension. You have the floor, Counselor.
I mean, I've been complaints about so many commercial or construction companies around the city, and the people that are calling me and emailing me is, they're saying that some companies have more than three, four cars or vans, trucks, parked on the streets. And the reason I want to do this is because I want to know, actually, Counselor Cooperow just brought me this, that they're only allowed to park one van or one truck on the city, but I have seen myself that some companies have parking four cars on the streets. So the reason I want to do this is because if they have more than one van or truck, they should park, they should pay a lot where they can park all these vans or these trucks because they actually taking parking space for the people in the city. People who are coming late from part-time, from full-time jobs, and these people need these spaces. And if these companies have more than four cars, they should pay somewhere else to park it. Thank you.
Counselor Matt Frank.
I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward because I know this is an issue that many parts of the city have seen. I know in my street, I live over in Galoolie, but I also represent parts of Mill Hill, which also seem to be inundated with trucks and vans that seemingly all belong to the same company, all in the same streets, and somehow they all seem to be registered. I know I've brought my concerns to the parking clerk before, and I know she's been working on trying to figure out how to, figure out how that's happening. And there have actually been some people that got caught up where they were using stickers in the wrong way. And they've caught those people, and those people have gotten their fines and have had their vehicles removed. But it is a serious issue when you've got these little side streets and you have four or five vans operating out of that street and there's no place to park. I know that specifically in the wintertime, it gets really kind of crazy because instead of park, because sometimes they're kind of, they're cute about it. Like they'll park down the street and around the corner, so nobody really notices. When that hits the fan, when that snow hits the fan and there's not that many parking spots, all of a sudden, these vans kind of begin congregating. And the way how I know that they're connected to the same house is then you see people coming out of that same house, that same apartment, like they're meeting, like they're having a business meeting inside the apartment, then they come out and everybody jumps in the vans and the vans go, and they're transferring things between the vans. So essentially, there's a lot of apartments in this city that I suspect are being operated as if they're small businesses, which is great if it's literally a small business, it's you and your van. But if you start bringing in ten, twelve employees and you're keeping all your vans on the streets, that becomes a real serious problem. So I do thank my colleagues for bringing this up because it has been a serious issue, specifically on the little side streets that might not see as many parking people. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cooperow.
This is an issue. It's a big problem. A lot of these small vehicles, which are considered, they're commercial plates, but they're not commercial vehicles. By the plates, they're commercial, but they're smaller, so they don't fit under the guidelines here. So they can park as many as they want. So the issue we have here is maybe change the guidelines of what can actually park in the street and what can't park in the street. Because if you go according to this, any small, a van, as long as it has four wheels, it doesn't pass six wheels, can park. So you can have a company that has six vans, that all of them are commercial vehicles, and park here, and by the regulation which we have, which are right here in front of me, they can park all day long. And that's taking away parking spots. So maybe what we need to do is to go back and change this where it doesn't benefit vans or commercial vehicles that are smaller than the size that it's required here, which still use commercial plates. So I think we should go back to the Parking Commission and revise these regulations to accommodate the residents here too. Because I don't think they're doing the resident justice by allowing all this to happen.
Counselor Cortell.
So I'll start by saying I don't have any particular issue with it going to parking or the subcommittee or being considered. Just want to clarify just something that seems to be sort of muddled together. We think of a commercial vehicle as being a larger vehicle, a van, something that under our parking guidelines is actually, you know, something of decent size. There are also cars people drive that have commercial plates. Somebody who owns a hair salon or a real estate agency or is a real estate agent may have a commercial vehicle that is just a car, and they have to satisfy certain guidelines to be a commercial vehicle, different insurance and their guidelines. So just for the general public to just clarify, you know, sort of not get the two things muddled together, there is absolutely a prohibition in the parking program of having vehicles of a certain size on streets without them being what everybody thinks is a commercial vehicle with proper approval. Then there are cars that have commercial plates. So you could walk down a street, see a lot of cars with commercial plates. That may be the person's only vehicle they drive, but they own it in association with a commercial endeavor. I just want to clarify that again. I don't have anything against anybody looking at this and seeing if there's a way it could be done better.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order, business?
Next order introduced by Counselor Vidal, Counselor Lopez, Rodriguez, and Tejada. Audit that a subcommittee conference be held to discuss the imposition of a one-year moratorium on any special permits variances that don't meet the minimum zoning requirements for off-street parking and/or for entities that seek parking relief until the city can establish a plan to alleviate the current parking crisis.
Chair recognizes Counsel Vidal.
I'm going to see under suspension if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it.
Counselor Cortell, most for roll call.
A roll call on the adoption.
Do you want to clarify?
I'll just say really quickly, I don't want to get into the big thing again. I think there's a potential charter issue here too. I will let, I will let, not going to ask for anything more than that, except just say, I just think there may be a potential charter issue with regard to... Whether it's pursuant to the charter.
Yeah, we can also get a ruling afterwards from the city solicitor.
Yeah, no, I'm not against it going and whatever the order, whatever.
So you still want the roll call, Counselor?
If you want, still want the roll call, you want to withdraw the roll call.
I'll withdraw the roll call.
Well, back to the, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on it. Thank you. So I don't understand how having a conversation is a violation of a charter, a violation of the charter. If we never have conversations about things that we want to potentially change, we're always going to get what we've always gotten. What is the point? But moving forward, I just want to have a conversation. We had a conversation about a possible development moratorium a year ago. Nobody mentioned the charter issue then. I'm asking to talk about it now. It's more specific. It's geared specifically to projects that come before the zoning board that don't meet the minimum zoning requirements for parking. We have a parking crisis in the city, and we can pretend that we don't have it as a way to continue to cite the hard-working people of this community and use it as revenue for the city. But at some point, if we don't come up with a way to fix this issue, then what we're doing is really just putting it on the backs of the people of the city, and that doesn't sit well with me. And with all due respect, Mr. Cortell, parking might not be an issue in your district, but it is in the more denser districts.
Through the chair, through the chair.
Pardon, pardon. My colleague who spoke before me may not have the issues of parking in his district, but there are other denser areas, District Four, Five, and Six, and Seven, that have these issues. And so all I'm saying is, can we have a conversation where we can figure out, put some pressure on our wonderful city manager, to figure out how we can alleviate some of the parking issues that we have here? It doesn't make sense if we know they're, we're already dense, and we continue to allow projects to come here with knowing that they don't have parking. What are we doing? Are we just trying to make more money? That doesn't sit well with me, and so I'm trying to be proactive about it. If it's a violation of the charter to have a conversation, then my apologies, but I still want to push forward and at least talk about this, genuinely.
Counselor Matt Frank. Cortell was going to do a name.
Is my name being mentioned?
You can speak.
I just reiterate, I started by saying I don't necessarily have a problem with the conversation taking place, and I actually don't want to mix up the, whether it's okay by the charter to, for the city council to take on something that has been delegated by the charter to the Parking Commission, which I'm not 100% sure on, but I think an opinion should be, should be taken. But to the point that you actually state by stating my name and saying that there was, that my particular area does not have a parking issue, I will state this. I was on city council before there was a parking program. I was on the city council when it was discussed over a multi-year period. I was on the city council that did not approve a version of the parking program. I think if you asked the former manager, City Manager Jay Ash, one of the times he was most bothered, let's say by an action of the city council, it was that we did not approve something and sent it back because we, as counselors, did not like it. So everybody said Jay always gets his way. Jay did not get his way on that one, and that was a multi-year process that certain people didn't think it would be. A lot of time, a lot of effort went into it. I voted against it when I didn't like it with, and with, along with my fellow counselors. And then when we felt it was a plan that was beneficial to the entire city, including my district, that may not have as many parking problems as others but does have its share, and my votes are, on big issues, are for the benefit of the entire City of Chelsea. I was an active participant in that. I knew very well I would get more complaints after I voted for it than before since, unlike other counselors, I don't get daily complaints about parking, and I had the responsibility to explain why I voted for it. And I had the responsibility to explain why I voted for it and to know the policy and explain the rationale. So with that said, minor offense to it. And again, don't have a problem with it if the charter approves it.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Matt Frank.
I wanted to address something I had heard about financing and money coming into the city. I often hear that argument that people make, well, the city's just looking to make money. The city's not a business. If, excuse me, I'm speaking.
Councilor.
So the city of Chelsea is not a business. It's not a nonprofit entity. It's a government. If the city brings in money and revenue, that money and revenue actually goes back out the door in the form of services. So one thing I would really like to see anytime there's a conversation about any sort of moratorium is what happens if there is a one-year break on anything that requires this? The budgets that we have in front of us and the five-year projected forecast includes an assumption that a certain number of buildings will be built. It includes an assumption a certain amount of fees will be collected and assumes that we'll be getting more money in the city door in the form of new development. So when we decide we're going to have a parking commission or people working for the parking department, that assumption was based off of more buildings going up in the city over the next five years, over the next year. We're already running deficit spending for our five-year financial forecast in a very strategic way. If we were to turn around and rip out the carpet from underneath the city manager, one of his toolkits, we would have to start, in my opinion, thinking about how would we make that money up? Most likely, that would be things like your downtown activities. That would be your kids playing in the park. All these things that people are running around during campaign season saying they brought and they made and they created, that happened because there was money in the bank account that previous councils and this council produced. It's not like somebody just snaps their fingers and all of a sudden you can have kids playing in the field. That money has to be created. It has to be produced. So that's, whenever I see a moratorium suggestion, that's what I want to know. I want to know, okay, how are we going to pay for these programs? What programs get cut? And who's the person who's going to be telling these people that's going to be cut? Or on the other side, is there going to be a suggestion for a two-and-a-half override where the taxes of all the other residents out in the city has to go up because we decided we didn't want to build more? I don't necessarily really care one way or the other if we build more or we build less. But I think it'll, I want the council to think in a logical progression that if you take away a dollar, you have to stop spending that dollar. I know it sounds a little bit crazy to a lot of people out there and people might even call me conservative for saying that, even though I consider myself very liberal. But if you don't have the money, you can't spend the money. If you don't build the buildings, you can't collect the taxes. If you can't collect the taxes, the kids can't play in that field. And the reason why I keep on focusing on that is that is something that we basically developed over the past two years. With the money that we've been squirreling away for the past 10 years, this council has had the opportunity to spring that into action. The city manager has had the opportunity of 10 to 15 years of fiscal prudence to really start building something. It's because we're fiscally prudent. It's because we allowed things to get built. It's because we're moving forward that this stuff is happening. If we stop that progression, that stuff stops. You go back to 2005, which is what I rarely kind of remember getting involved, we didn't have these things that we have now. These things that were already literally taken for granted and it's only been around for a year or two, and we're acting like it's been around forever. It's that fiscal prudence that has happened over the past 15 years. And I know the council president has been around for all that time, some of my colleagues have been. We have board members who were around at that time that made sure things happened. I would hate to see that momentum get lost because we put a moratorium in. One thing I would suggest is if you read one of the old Chelsea records, there was a counselor whose name is Matt Frank, who suggested maybe we should do like a downtown parking garage situation where you collect fees for people that don't meet their parking requirements. That might be something to look at. So that was just a quick pitch at the very end. Thank you.
Councilor Tejada.
So I think that this thing is just asking for a conversation. I don't know that all the fees collected really, you know, nobody's saying to stop collecting any fees and the city isn't going to go under. You know, parking is one of the biggest issues that we get approached about in the city, aside from the whole rental and all that. But, you know, we don't have any control of the market conditions. So I don't think it's a bad idea to sit down, get together and have a conversation about one of the hottest topics in the city. You know, it is a consideration. It is not that we're going to have a meeting and it's a done deal and the city's going to miss out on millions of dollars. There isn't that much land in Chelsea to develop any new buildings. So I think it's, I think it's, it's not a bad idea to just have a conversation, you know, on the hottest topic in the city.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rodriguez.
I just want to repeat what Councilor Tejada just said, that this is just a discussion and if it does violate anything, we can always cancel the meeting. So we should be open to any type of discussion. And I just want to talk briefly, like any, can we continue just to keep on the order and not talk about other topics that kind of doesn't make sense to the order? Just to talk about just a discussion? And if you don't agree with discussion, just say no? Thank you.
Councilor Lopez.
Yes, this order is only for those people who are coming to some construction on, on the city. I agree with you that, you know, we shouldn't stop building, you know, because that's where we get the money for, for the city. But what we are saying over here is it's only for the, for the people who want to construct over here and doesn't meet the requirement of parking. We need parking in this city. That's the big issue and it's a big concern for everybody. You know, if some of you guys don't, don't agree that it's not a problem with parking, I, I think in my area, maybe one, one council said in his area, doesn't, doesn't need this requirement, but in my district, it is a big issue. And so it's just to see, the moratorium is for, for the people who were going to come and do some building, but what we need over here is parking. This is what we want. Thank you.
Councilor Cooperall.
I don't believe we should have a moratorium on development. I believe we should have a moratorium on parking. That's the problem. When the developers want to come in and want to build, let them build like they do other places. Go underground or go above the ground. Nobody's telling you to stop building because if you stop building, your city dies. Your lifeblood is your building. So the problem is not building. The problem is finding ways to contain the parking. That's the issue you have. You're only 1.8 square miles. You're in a very small area. In congested area like my district and other district like mine's, you can't find a parking spot. There used to be lots of parking spot in my area. Now there's none. So if you keep building and building and building without these parking, even though they tell you, nobody has parking or they're, they're going to use the public transportation. It ain't so. If you want a society of transients, yes. But if you want a society of people that are going to live in your city and they're going to have a family, you're going to have to have at least one or two parking spots. There's nothing wrong with building. Building is the lifeblood of our city. The problem is finding a way to resolve the parking issue.
Thank you, Councilor. In, in regards to parking, I did a lot of research on looking at parking garages. In order to build a parking garage, it's 60,000 per car. So we need to keep those kind of numbers in our head when we're talking about building a garage. Depending on how many cars you want to garage, it's 60,000 for one spot. Next auto business, Councilor.
Order introduced by Councilor Vido. Order that the Traffic Parking Commission evaluate the intersection of Summit and Warren Ave to consider installing a speed bump in the area as it poses a threat to public safety.
Summit and Warren. Motion.
I'm waiting for you to recognize me, President. Order, move to adopt under suspension if there are no objections.
Say no objections.
Audience, introduced by Councilor Vido. Officer Nada, Tejada, Lopez, Garcia, Ray Cooperall, Rodriguez, Robinson and Murphy. Whereas Puerto Rico has seen unprecedented devastation in the aftermath of Hurricane Maria, leaving U.S. citizens in life-threatening conditions. The need for food, water and medical assistance is critical. And whereas the Jones Act of Merchant Marine Act 1920 U.S., 46 USC 883 legislates that all imports and exports to the island are required to be transported on American ships built in American shipyards with American crews. Foreign flagships must pay substantial fines and adds a 15 to 20% cost increase on shipped goods that is passed on to the people of Puerto Rico as they grapple with a $73 billion debt. And whereas 3.4 million American citizens are in a humanitarian crisis, 100% of the island will be without electricity for the next four to six months. 44% of the island is without clean drinking water and 80% of the island crops have been wiped out. Most schools remain closed, leaving 700,000 students without access to formal education. Flooded towns will have to deal with diseases that are common in contaminated drinking water. And whereas the temporary 10-day lifting of the Jones Act from President Trump has expired, imposing restrictions to the relief and long-term rebuilding efforts Puerto Rico will face. And whereas 13% of Chelsea's population, according to 2010 census, is of Puerto Rican descent and the United States is on to over 4 million Puerto Rican families and it's our moral obligation to stand with members of our community and their families against any obstacles to Puerto Rico receiving critical life-saving aid. And whereas repeal of the Jones Act has been backed by the Heritage Foundation, Cato Institute, Manhattan Institute, Senator John McCain of Arizona, Representative Gary Palmer of Alabama and several major publications, as well as a 12-month repeal from colleagues in Boston City Council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council supports a repeal of the Jones Act, which would allow foreign ships to bring life-saving supplies directly to the island of Puerto Rico without further burdening the 3.5 million U.S. citizens in Puerto Rico or their economy.
Chair recognizes Councilor Vido.
To accept a foul unanimously under suspension if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it.
Yeah, the floor councilors, anyway, you want this resolution to be sent?
No, just for our records. Oh.
May I suggest we send this to Senator Warren, Senator Markey and our Congressman Capuano.
I will accept what he said. Thank you.
You're the floor.
Yes. First and foremost, I want to just thank my colleagues that supported me on this. This is really important. After Puerto Rico was devastated with Hurricane Maria, there have been so many obstacles in getting aid and food and medicine to people on the island. There are still people that are still, there are family members I still haven't been able to get in touch with. The conversation has been sidetracked, whether it's talk about the $73 billion debt or there aren't enough trucks or FEMA's not doing their job. The Jones Act is just another obstacle that's standing in the way of people getting aid. And I just want to be able to, I'm just proud to pass this resolution where we're able to stand with other activists and leaders, elected officials that are asking to repeal the Jones Act, just so Puerto Rico has one less thing in the way of providing aid to the people. That's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Councilor Cortell.
Sponsored member on this, I certainly would have been if I had been involved or asked, but I will just say super quick, the, the response by the national government to the situation in Puerto Rico is appalling and completely unacceptable. And I wholeheartedly support the resolution and anything, anything that can be done to get the aid that's necessary to Puerto Rico to the residents of Puerto Rico. Again, unacceptable and anything like the Jones Act that stands in the way should be opposed.
Councilor Officer Nada.
I just want to take, since we're on the subject matter of what's going on in Puerto Rico, to publicly acknowledge the work that the Chelsea Collaborators have done over the last couple of weeks. Many of you have known that they started a drive and under stewardship of the Executive Director Gladys Vega, the amount of goods that they've been able to collect that was donated to them from all sorts businesses and Chelsea residents has been amazing. I know Councilor Garcia and Councilor Lopez was there in front when we had one or they held one here in City Hall. But today I witnessed, I think it was the fourth truck of goods that was shipped out of Chelsea, literally 18 wheelers. And the type of coordination and volunteerism that we saw really was unprecedented. It's amazing what the, you know, what people are willing to do. And I have to just recognize the businesses such as Yellow Glow, Eagle Air Freight, TJ Maxx, Compare Market, I know I'm going to be forgetting a few, the Teamsters Union, the Painters Union who donated their time and the trucks. And of course, you know, Gladys with her, her power and her passion to be able to collect that much. The number of individuals in this city who just, they know that, you know, they were told the best thing they can do is give money, but they felt they need to do something. And whether it was, you know, a can or a case of cans or whatever it was, they brought it to the collaborative. The volunteers, some of them who we saw tonight, who spent hours at night to package them, all of it, to put it in labels, to make sure that it was all, you know, ready to be received and shipped. JetBlue, who also is involved here. Again, it was an amazing effort and I know that Gladys is planning on taking it, the trip herself down there to make sure. There's been some talk of the, everything that, you know, the United States is sending down there, particularly this type of effort is not getting to a properly destination and channel. You know, she's working with relatives down there to make sure that whatever Chelsea folks is donating, whatever Chelsea businesses is donating, is going to get to the right hands. So again, I wanted just to take this moment on, on this topic to recognize the humongous effort that was played part here. Again, to the city manager, Tom Ebrizino, who helped out with the different organizations, the fire department gave, the police department, the police department officers who went to Puerto Rico as part of the FEMA, everyone. It's just been, it's been amazing what a little city can do when it puts it, when it puts forth the effort. And I'm sure the people of Puerto Rico are going to much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to add, add on to that, actually, John Luiz has been in Puerto Rico helping out, raising money. Lieutenant Sanchez traveled to Puerto Rico, traveled with his own money buying medicine to bring over. He had a tough time getting the medicine in, but he actually did get it in. We do have a couple of police officers who are part of the FEMA team that are over in Puerto Rico now helping out with security and stuff like that on the island. Any public announcements? Tejada?
Congressman Capuano is going to be holding a town hall style meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 in Soldier's Home. Just wanted to note that.
Councilor Vido.
Wednesday is the last day to register to vote, so come down to Chelsea City Hall, grab a voter registration card and register to vote. Elections will be November 7th, but the last day to register to vote is this Wednesday.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Announcements, on October 19th is a neighborhood walk. If anyone in the District Seven or District Two area want to join us, it's, this walk is mainly in the District Two area. We have our walk in the District Seven area the first week each month. Another announcement is CYBL signups, Chelsea Youth Basketball. It's happening every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday from 5:30 to 8:00 at the Williams School. Signups will run until Thanksgiving break. Another announcement, on Halloween Day, myself and school committee member Kelly Garcia are throwing a little Halloween party for all residents, not just the District Seven are throwing a little Halloween party for all residents, not just the District Seven area. It's just a social event, just come by, we'll have music playing, some karaoke, passing out candy and some snacks, just have a good time from 5:00 to 8:00 on Halloween Day. And we have, oh, sorry, thank you. Location is on John Rees Park on Washington Ave, I believe it's 140 Washington Ave, and we'll be there again from 5:00 to 8:00. And my last announcement is, support your football teams. We are fortunate to have two teams here, programs, Pride and Papuana. The kids are very discouraged that no one comes to watch their games, so they leave to other cities where they get their support. So I suggest and hope any residents that are free on Sundays from, any time from 9:00 to 2:00 to come, support your, your kids, your residents, your neighbors, and just have a good time and show them the support they need to motivate them to continue youth sports here in Chelsea.
Councilor Murph.
Chelsea Pride, Henry, pay attention to this, Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:30 at the PPC is their annual spaghetti dinner, $7 a person.
All you can eat?
I believe.
Okay.
I'm sure many of you have seen it on the streets, the new yellow bikes that are around Chelsea, the OFU bikes. It's a bike-sharing program that, with the assistance of Green Roots and the city manager, we're able to bring to the city. A lot of questions about what the program is. Basically, they've been parked around the city, similar to Hubway, you use a, an app on your phone, a smartphone, to download, and you can use it to bike around the city, to neighboring cities, and the nice thing about these is, there's no station per se that you have to return it to, it's wherever and however you want to use it. So we'll have this test pilot program going to the beginning of December, and then we'll see how it goes, and then maybe do it again in the spring. Thank you.
Speaking of bikes, I'll, I'll share something that happened today, happened to be not a yellow bike, what happened to be a bike riding on the sidewalk, probably doing about 20 miles an hour and knocked over one of the city hall employees who was pregnant, and had to go to the hospital today. So, we should just be aware of making sure we have the bikes stay in the street as much as possible.
Passed away. I don't know her name, I know her last name was Wilson.
Any other? Councilor Cortell.
A longtime family member who, a friend, I'm sorry, friend, Dr. Paul Dratch passed away last week from a long battle with cancer, very highly respected doctor in the city of Chelsea, not city of Chelsea, sorry, city of Boston, and has just, was an expert in his field and very well-respected.
Councilor Lopez, did you have? You have all said. Well, thank you, and one other announcement, happy birthday to our colleague. Saying no further business before this council returns.